All right, well, good evening. It is now seven thirty and welcome to the City Council regular meeting for today, July twenty fifth. I'm calling the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Mayor Garrett.
Um, here.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Councilmember Canes.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Madam Mayor, you have a call.
Thank you. I invite everyone in the audience and online to say the pledge of allegiance.
I do just. I mean, I'm in the United States of America and to the Republic, which is taking one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thirty out. Okay. We have public comment for items that's on the agenda, because I'm limited to three minutes, and this is for anything that is on the agenda right now. Is there anyone that is on Zoom or anyone that is in the audience that would like to come up to the computer and speak? You're not required to give your address, but if you would like to, that's totally up to you. I'll have your name.
Mayor Garrett, Councilmember Women, thank you for having us today. My name is Chris Hollis. This is my wife, Brittany Hollis. We are residents of Eldorado Place, and we are also here with our neighbors behind us in support of item seven, section H, the resident petition to establish a special assessment. We have all signed in favor of doing it kind of the way that's historically been done with the residents having that financial, you know, burden, not, well, not burden. You were right with burden. Having a financial part and, oh, sorry, having a financial partner along to get the process moving. We know that it was voted upon, but we are also very passionate about getting our roads paved, and we're just here in support, and we just want to show that we are here as a unit.
Well, thank you. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else that would like to speak about items on the agenda? Any hands up in the audience, I mean, in the, on Zoom either? All right. Anyone for public comments? Okay. Next, we have the approval of the agenda. Some.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Has to be, it has some comments, I mean, some.
Oh, yeah, with, you're going to go.
I'll make a motion to update the agenda to include items K and L, which are an OPEB evaluation discussion and adding a new group to MERS respectively, as items K and L.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any additional discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yeah.
Councilmember Canes.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Next, we have the consent agenda. All items listed under consent agenda are considered to be routine and not controversial by the City Council will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion. If a discussion is desired, that item or items will be removed from the consent agenda and discussed separately immediately after consent agenda approval in its normal sequence on the regular agenda. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda with the exception of A and B? There's second.
Second.
Been moved in second since there is no discussion. Excuse me. I have roll call, please.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yeah.
Councilmember Canes.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Motion, here.
First up is going to be the approval of minutes, study session, June twenty seventh, twenty twenty-two, and regular meeting, June twenty seventh, twenty twenty-two.
Yes, I would like to go to page three. And senior luncheon. I don't believe that my concern was thoroughly addressed or recorded, rather. I also expressed concern regarding what appeared to be for the moment use of city visual credit cards. I would like that to be included.
Is that under the senior luncheon or?
Yes.
Okay.
Page four, under Mary, council comments, which should be the optimist. Page five. There's multiple stones of John Woo's name throughout. I believe it's J O N R U U D.
Correct.
So if you can correct that throughout. On page. At the end, it says, Councilmember Miller inquired about funding to paint Southfield Road. The plan will go along with the Southfield Road project. We don't know what that is. Page six. At the end of.
At the top.
That was, that was when we were talking about eleven mile and Laker Boulevard at the intersection where we were talking about, you know, potentially putting a grid pattern on the, on the ground and, and I think you had asked about if it was funny for, for standing.
Oh, you're talking about the, yeah, the walkway.
Page eight, under nine, that was the vote on the budget. I don't see the first vote recorded where it was three to two against the budget. Page nine, I believe the actual electoral vehicle charging ordinance. This second sentence should be an interest of, I think. Sustainability, I think, is that supposed to be? And then page twelve, the office, under section fifteen.
It's June twenty twenty-two dispersment reports. Yeah, I actually want to explain both.
Well, you can do each one. If you're concluded with the changes to the study session, then you can adopt those, and then at the regular meeting, then if there are changes, you can adopt those.
Okay. So I need a motion to adapt the approval of minutes. Study session, June twenty seventh, twenty twenty-two, regular meeting, June twenty seventh, twenty twenty-two. So moved.
Second word.
It's been moved in second for the approval of the minutes for both study session and the regular meetings. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Canes.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yeah.
Motion, here.
Thank you. Next is the June twenty twenty-two dispersment reports.
If you go to page sixteen, the top of the page, Oakland County Goods and Services, thirty-three thousand, three hundred and four dollars and nine cents.
That is on the agenda tonight for the contract for the assessing. Those are the assessing fees. They are usually paid prepaid, and it's a prepaid expense. I did not get the contract. We were in a three-year contract, and I did not get the contract until the assessing department called me and asked me where the, if we had the contract signed yet, and I don't know if it went to Cheryl's email or, but I did not get it. They brought it to me, so that was what happened there.
And they have them paid already or they haven't?
We, we sent a check to them, but if we don't approve it, they'll send it back. But I, we've always used Oakland County Assessing Office, so I am not seeing a problem with it, but there could be.
Okay. I'm also on their community foundation payable card member service monthly stated five hundred eighty-six dollars and eighty-five cents. Same page.
What page was that?
Same page.
Sixteen.
Two below where we just were. Chapter four, six, seven, zero, nine.
I'm sorry, you're just a minute because I knew what the first one was, so I didn't have to open the page up.
Oh, sorry. We have the probation payable.
No, yeah. I would have to look into that and get back with you.
Okay. Page seven. Under general fund government services, we have planning and consulting fees, paid to Giffords Webster Engineering, but it says Laker Village DDA Planning Services and DDA Planning Services for two, so it's about seven thousand dollars. Why is that coming out of the general fund and not on the DDA account?
Early cost share agreement with the duty between the DDA and the city. The DDA pays fifteen thousand, three hundred dollars towards the Giffords Webster invoices, so we have exceeded that, that amount.
So what?
So the DDA has exceeded that amount that we, that we contribute as stipulated in the cost share.
Yes, so then we pay the rest of the, yes, is there a kind of fact or a limit on that or just as it comes up?
There is a retainer. I would have to look for in the specifics, but we do have a retainer, and there are some additional fees that do get incurred from time to time depending on or working on ordinance development. If we have extra, extra meetings that are not included in that retainer.
Um, under administration, code enforcement officer, does our code enforcement officer have a gun?
No, he did not. We bought, we purchased uniforms for him so that the residents would know that we had our code enforcement officer was a, we had identified him with uniforms. So here I'm dealing guns, so.
They sell uniforms.
That police department get their uniforms. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Uh, under building and grounds, transit communication, something installation and reprogramming of scripts, nine hundred and nineteen dollars and ninety-six cents.
There is.
Very pretty model.
I believe this doesn't already the new door locking system they had to reprogram. You remember the south side door kept remaining locked even though it said it was open, so they had to reprogram that door along with some equipment in the basement.
Eighteen. Batteries plus office supplies, hundred ninety-seven dollars and eight cents for battery as well.
Yes, so a lot of our batteries for our police department are portable radios. They have to be replaced. They go bad through time, so it's just getting those and then a number of other batteries that we use for, for flashlights and things like that.
Down at the bottom of the page, so other contractual services, public service, Laker Services LLC, their three payments of ten thousand, four hundred and thirty-six dollars and sixty-one cents.
Those are their monthly payments. They were behind the, their bookkeeper had a stroke, so they were not giving us their invoices, and we had to try to get a caught up on their invoices for the fiscal year. Okay, so all of the three identical checks in multiple sections, that's the same.
Credit.
Okay.
She, I was hoping that just been wrong. It's only supposed to be once, not three times. Uh, page nineteen, Giffords Webster, twenty-two thousand, two hundred and nine dollars for citywide payment program. Is that just for overseeing the program or what?
I, in part, it's project management for that, and any engineering design services that they may need to do.
Um, and then again, on page twenty, we got that same twenty-two thousand, two hundred and nine, ten to Giffords Webster. Forty-seven fifty. We split our, anything we do, we split between major and local, so it's a fifty-fifty. When we do taxing of roads, we do a fifty-fifty between major and local roads, and that's what that is.
Okay.
So the, we have paid Giffords one. Seventy-one thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars and ninety-two cents in June. Okay, yes, again, I was hoping those were just due buckets. Same Southfield Corridor Alley Evaluation, six thousand, five hundred and fifty-five dollars with the project of DDA. Yes. Page twenty-nine, we're in those forty. These are the paper and Woski bills. There's thirteen hundred dollars for conference with defendant, prepare plea offer and ref course on. We haven't had any conversations about any of that.
Which page?
Twenty-nine.
Page twenty-one.
Oh, I've been twenty.
Twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-nine.
That's the prosecution bill.
That's what?
That's for the city's prosecution. That's billed hourly.
That's correct.
Correct.
Okay, so that's not something prepared, knowing what the offers are and everything that's everything that comes to City Council.
No, that's the, that's the day-to-day prosecution work for all the enforcement actions, for all the citations that are written.
And then at one point, we had asked for an update on all the litigations. Is that something that we will be getting?
I believe so. The litigation's being handled by Metal Brook, the city's liability carrier, so that would, that's a different attorney that would, would, that's handling that, that would provide an update on that.
Yes, and I had put in my update to council that that would be coming to you in the near future, but we're not at that point to have that meeting yet. There are some other things that are taking place currently, and once those are completed, we will set that up and have a combination meeting with council and the DDA sensitive impacts both of them.
Okay, and then page fifty-five. Revenues, expenses, expenditures, the month ended June period, twenty-two. Want to verify that we are one million, five hundred seventy-two thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars, ninety-nine dollars expenses over revenue.
Those are not the true figures as of yet because we are still inputting things for the audit, so things are changing. There's going to be some more cash revenues coming in, like the major local roads have the cash revenue that came in at the end of June, so that has to be put back in. There is other things that have to be put in. You'll probably see World Knowledge Fund, fund, fund more money put into there. Those are things that are being cleaned up for the audit now.
You can see the difference of when you go through the detail.
Do you have any idea how much has been cut down?
I don't know. It's, at this time, I mean, I've got three weeks to get all the audit stuff right, and so, and I've been working my weekends and everything to get everything done, so I do not know as of yet.
That's a lot, and that's the budget for twenty twenty-two. Okay.
Anyone for a motion from June, the June twenty twenty-two dispersment report? So moved. Need a second. Need a second for the June twenty twenty-two dispersment reports. Second. It's been moved to the second, so the June twenty twenty-two dispersment reports. Are there any further discussions? Hearing none. Moving to the action request for consideration approval. The first up is going to be the extension of the House in the Woods realtor contract.
Evening, Council.
Good evening. If you would like to introduce that. I would like to do that. Moving to that page. Hey, Danny, oh, maybe not. Um, first of all, we'd like to welcome Mr. Rude back, you know, coming forward to give us an update on things, and we're talking about the contract with Keller Williams to continue to list the House in the Woods profit or prod. Parcel property, there you go, not, not, I can't get that without, sorry about that, but to go over the contract and see if council wants to renew this contract to go through January twenty-sixth of twenty twenty-three with a list price of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the property. Staff has asked that the selling price, excuse me, staff asked for more information to be included in the listings such as drone footage. Mr. Root and I have spoken about that today, obtaining that and going in to clear up just a little bit more of the land to make it look a little more presentable, and then also making sure that under item twenty-one on here where it says other, we're going to add to the contract that he will be coming in and giving regular monthly updates to council, telling us any activity that we've had there, any offers, any of that kind of stuff, so that we're aware of what's happening each month. So that is the contract that is before you, and if you'd like to add any more to that, Mr. Rude?
Well, I already added to the council, agent to make a monthly report to council and publicly control it. So I indicated before, I was would like to see the property cleaned up a little bit, but I can still do its rolling photo. I'll order it this week. It'll be out by the end of the week. But we got to clean some brush off that property. I saw there was to it. I mean, I, I can appreciate that the staff is very overworked, but at the same time, if you want to sell this property, you got to do something about some of that brush and invasive plants and whatnot that we helped tremendously, I second. That's about the extent. The only other suggestion I made is it's advertised as Forest Drive. I'm possibly thinking of maybe saying Morningside Plaza, okay, because it's, Forest Drive isn't a real well-known street, to be perfectly honest with you. It's more, right now, that's more like a trail than a street, but, you know, it is, I did take the suggestion of having the, the flat, you know, and that, that was on, on line as well, you know, that was available to other agents to view a lot of the history of the property. But that's about the extent of it. These interest rates unfortunately are headed north, and as they move higher, it gets a little more difficult and difficult to sell any property. You know, for any property you sold.
Thank you. Who would like to make a motion?
So.
Second.
Excellent.
The discussion comes after the motion.
Yeah.
And the motion is this, we are doing motion for approval of the extension of the House in the Woods realtor contract. It's been moved by Councilwoman Miller and seconded by Councilwoman Canes. Thank you. Is there any discussion?
So do you plan on doing the mapping as well? You know, when you, if you go on Zillow, usually if you see a vacant property, you can see the outline, the mapping of where it's actually located.
Okay, I can.
It's like a geo.
Again, that was, that was online with the, with the real cap, the NLS, so somebody could get that. Again, we've had that before. I will get that on solo when it's not on there already.
It's not. Okay, but thank you.
Any further discussion?
I have a question. Does the city have any old photos of the property? Like what it looked like when the house was there, maybe, so somebody could envision it without all that stuff there?
There's, there's probably something, someplace around.
Historical society probably has a lot of.
Yeah, that might not, that's, that's not a bad idea. I don't think they have, we, we don't want a, we don't want a recent photo of different two thousand.
No, no.
What's that?
I, I, the only. In our, you know, collective G drive, the fire, you definitely don't want to know. I'm not, 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 I'm just, but I think.
Chuck the net king, sorry. We got a hot beer on this property.
And she goes to Historical Society, so I know the.
Yeah.
Any further discussion?
So recently, you haven't talked to any developers or anything yet, either?
I've spoken to a few developers. He had the apartment there on eleven mile. I spoke with that party. I think it's an apartment or way around, a little right by, and he wasn't too interested. Is it, it's a different type of property. It really is. It's a very odd shape. Somewhere along the line, somebody's going to get cheated on a property. We do have a few of them already that were built back in the fifties where they have a, they just couldn't put a house. It was too small to put a house, but you know, I, I think the chances are good that it will sell, but again, clearing that brush, we've been talking about that since January.
If you go on, move both, if you can, House in the Woods, Laker Village, and then click on that, click on images. They have some beautiful photos in there.
Okay.
So. Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Canes.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Motion, here.
Thank you.
Can I make a procedural comment before we?
Sure.
Um, Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, but I know in our, our trainings, we've been told not to do so moves and that the motion should actually be specifically stated. Is that correct?
Yeah, if you could, assist the clerk in the preparation of the minutes, if the media, if the motion could be stated out.
Next, we have the Oakland County assessing contract. Thank you, thank you, John. Okay, the assessing contract is before you, as you notice, the memo that is there shows a four percent increase this year between the real property rates and from last year and this year, and the personal property rates. Real property was fourteen eighty-four per parcel and thirteen nineteen per parcel for personal. And this contract now for twenty-two, twenty-three takes real property rates up to fifteen dollars and forty-three cents and personal property rates up to thirteen dollars and seventy-two cents. So those are charged per parcel where applicable here in the county, and again, we had the assessing services with Oakland County. We have the GIS map that's provided to us, great services through that, so the recommendation is to approve the contracts with Oakland County for assessing. Thank you.
And I'll add to that, too. They also. And I'll add to that too. They also handle all the small claims and residential appeals. Uh, and they do, uh, work with my office for any commercial appeals. That's part of this agreement.
Thank you. Who would like to make the motion or someone make a motion?
A motion to, uh, go ahead. Motion to approve the Oakland County assessing contract.
Second. It's been moved in second. Is there any additional, uh, or is there any discussion?
Yes, I would like to know what does this process look like? What do they base our values on? I know that our properties have been undervalued over the years as compared to other communities. And so I just wondered how our rates are determined, on that, who in the city is responsible for monthly updates to the town?
Are you talking monthly updates on the building permits?
Whatever.
Because they are, they normally the building permits are set by the building department hopefully. For any new additions or any, um, work that's done, new growths, any of that is done by the building department hopefully.
But also.
And the other question you had was on how the rates and that.
Yeah, what did the process look like?
I would have talked to the assessor. I could probably try to get the assessor in here and have her maybe come in for a meeting.
That would be, I mean, you're paying three thousand dollars.
I will talk to her. I see.
I, I do think too, um, when property values are set, um, because of heavily in state tells you what you can and cannot increase by, um, we can't look at a neighboring property and say, oh, their property values are so much higher. We have beautiful homes here. I would love to have higher property values. I'm sure everybody would, except for the taxes that go along with it. But, uh, we can't make increases substantially to be comparable to other communities because we are capped at what we can raise prices or increases even, uh, you know, we're, it's, it's dictated to us how much of an increase. Many communities are one percent per year, um, to be able to increase your value. So that kind of keeps us limited where we're at.
Well, except when there's a sale.
Except when there's a sale.
And that's where I've noticed that we haven't kept up with them. Again, I, we have a very high, high tax rate and so that really impacts new residents by, um, you know.
And that's a good question.
There have been a lot of, um, you know, things about perceptions of our community and that kind of thing. So I'm really.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Councilmember Kness.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Cantor.
Yes.
Motion, Karen.
Thank you. Next, we have the Oakland County Animal Control Proposal. Okay, I apologize. I did not get a memo done on this one. But there are, um, some notes that I, I put together, um, in the little summary sheet that I did give you. That we did have a proposal that was submitted to us by Oakland County Animal Control. Um, and that they will, uh, take over doing all responses for animal control, any calls, um, to pick up strays or injured, uh, animals or responses to animal bites. Um, and that they will incur those costs. The caveat is to that, that, um, they also will pick up any of the licensing fees that we uh, obtained throughout the year. So revenue last year was one thousand one hundred seventy-five dollars for dog and cat licenses. I, I don't know that I've ever seen a cat license before, but for, for those licenses. And, uh, expenses were seven hundred ninety dollars and fifty-three cents. So the cost and the time that it takes from our police department in order to respond to those when we're already so tightly limited, uh, in, in numbers of staff there, it really makes sense to go ahead and honor this uh, agreement with Oakland County and let them handle all of the calls for animal control in our, in our city. The only thing that we would be responsible for would be dead deer. DPS would still have to go out and take care of that. Um, if something was in the road, uh, we'd have to pick that up. But otherwise strays and, uh, any other types of calls that you normally would put through animal control would be handled by Oakland.
Okay.
I'll, I'll make a motion to, uh, approve an agreement with Oakland County, with the Oakland County, uh, Oakland, approve the Oakland County, uh, Animal Control Proposal.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, well, it looks like just in total, I mean, our total expenditure looks like it's almost thirty-four hundred dollars. When you include officer time. So it looks like a no-brainer and we lose eleven hundred and seventy-five dollars in revenue, but we reduce our expenses by almost thirty-four hundred. So it seems, it's pretty straightforward.
That's correct. We do spend a significant amount of time with this. The big one is if we do, uh, locate a dog, that we, we're taking an officer to convey all that to Pontiac. And then the city incurred any costs if that owner is not located. So, uh, plus with that, we, we don't have a vehicle that's outfitted for animals. So we're putting in backseat, which causes problems at times.
And so then a resident would just simply still call, um, to the police.
Still call. I'm sure that we would still respond. It would also trigger a response for animal control in Oakland County. We could assist them, but that would be their primary job.
Okay.
Also looks good in the fact that residents can get a three-year license too, uh, at a discounted rate. So.
And they still come up here every year. And they still come up here through the city. We just, okay.
And, and the other one is we currently don't have a program to, uh, assist residents with bats and raccoons and stumps.
Right.
Or so the fact that the county will respond and they do that.
That's what it is.
Ben, I did have a question for the chief. Do you hope they're also going to be handling the issues of citations under state law for, for dogs at large or, um, dangerous animals?
I will find that out. I can't answer that right now.
Cause that's a potential another. Right now, if ordinance, if an officer writes a ticket for one of our ordinance violations, then that's a cost to the city as well because it's being prosecuted by, by me. Whereas if it's written by animal control, those are, those costs are prosecuted by the county prosecutor. You don't get the revenue from the court, um, on the backside of it, but prosecution, the expense of, of writing the citation would be covered by the county.
So there's no need to modify the motion though regarding that or anything, right?
No, I just, it was a question. I mean, I was curious if they were going to do it as part of the service or not, but. Could we, uh, get the answer and then bring it back to the table?
Isn't significant?
I'm saying it would be additional cost for the city. Yeah.
Oh, by not going through.
By not going through.
Yeah.
Additional thing.
I don't know. I'm saying, can we get the answer?
But if they don't offer it.
Well, animal control has the ability to write citations under state law. So it would be a different law than our local ordinance. Um, however, they have that ability. And the question is if they're going to be patrolling and enforcing in the city. Then that would be, um, the presumption is that they were right under their ordinances instead of ours. I don't know that that's what this agreement entails or not, but.
But from understanding it correctly, we're, we're, we're still saving thirty-four hundred dollars and we could be saving more.
Right.
That's the issue. We're not gonna, we're not gonna save less. We're gonna save more because we wouldn't have your time.
And we don't have a, a lot of them that we, we do prosecute, but occasionally we do. And so it's just a thought.
Our dog.
Exactly. Barb knows all too well.
I do. Um, one quick question, Scott. Is this pretty typical of a year?
Yes.
It's, that's what we average.
Yes.
Okay.
It's pretty typical.
Any other discussions? Hearing none, roll call please.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Cantor.
Yeah.
Councilmember Kness.
Yes.
Motion, Karen.
Next, we have the confirmation of appointment of Kelda London for city clerk. Um, I have had the opportunity. I know it's a short time, um, but to observe Kelda and I, I think that she's continuing to grow in this role. I know, uh, there were concerns, uh, that have been expressed, but, um, I think she has stepped into this role for the last eight months willingly as the acting clerk. She's been taking training to, uh, get her certified. With Oakland County and with the state of Michigan to be able to administer elections. And, uh, we will have Gloria Ford on site for the August and November election to also provide additional oversight. Kelda is currently going through training to obtain her certified municipal clerk's designation. Um, and as a third of the way through that, and we are supporting her to continue doing that training. Additionally, her ability to stay so calm, uh, is something that I, I tried to glean very much from her on that. During interactions with citizens that come to the window, um, or people that she's on the phone with. I think just, uh, really speak to her, um, her character, um, and, and how level-headed she is and her responses. So, um, looking at that, I know it's, uh, something that from the city, we seek hard to promote from within, um, and the fact that Kelda stepped up to the plate. And, and has so willingly taken this on for the last month. She is my first choice to, um, appoint as clerk for the city of Laker Village.
Thank you.
And I would ask that council, um, as part of that process, council is to affirm, um, you know, um, I can appoint people to positions. But the clerk is to be affirmed by council.
Thanks.
Go for it. Okay, uh, make a motion to approve the confirmation of appointment for Kilda London.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
The one, one thing I just wanted to mention to, for residents who don't know Gloria Harris, who you mentioned, who will be providing election assistance as the former clerk. It's a former clerk of, of the city of Laker Village, so.
Thank you. And I have a question.
Yes.
Is there anything Kelda can't do? Um, no, I mean, until she's certified, I mean, she can do everything. Or what, what, what is she, is she limited?
Elections here.
Okay.
She is just working to obtain her designation as a certified municipal clerk. So that, that sounds, sounds kind of like it's in conflict with each other that she's certified by Oakland County and the state of Michigan, but there is further training that goes on to give her a plaque and an actual designation as a certified municipal clerk. And that's what she's continuing to do. Attending trainings within the county, um, and at the state level so that, um, she continues to grow in her knowledge. And it's something that even once she becomes certified, has that designation from this organization. It's like, uh, Pam is a, uh, a treasurer here, but she goes to Michigan GFOA to become, uh, certified through that or Michigan Municipal Treasurers Association, those types of things. Even though she's had that training, she continues to go on through that. So that's something that, um, Kelda will continue to do as well. It's just a, a part of the, the process. So she can do an election on her own. We wouldn't even have to have Gloria come in. But because it's still a, a new thing for her, it's just something to continue to build that foundation stronger for her that we're doing to bring that in.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discuss, go ahead.
Yes, I'm sure Kelva is a lovely person. But I have some real concerns. I don't think that we can afford someone in, in training. Our twenty twenty-one elections were a mess. That ended up costing the city over twenty-five thousand dollars. That was because of lack of experience and training and some, you know, lot, uh, unfamiliarity with some of the Michigan election law. Um, and so I'm very concerned about that. I think that we need someone who knows the law, um, someone that will make sure that the law is followed. Also, the city clerk is the point person on FOIA request. Um, in, in studying the Freedom of Information Act four forty-two of nineteen seventy-six. It's clear that we are having some problems and not following the rules of that act. Um, I have filed multiple requests and paid fees and still I haven't received anything. So in that regard, I think that we need somebody that, that knows what that law is and what the requirements are and, um, how to follow it. I think not doing so puts the city at risk. To be honest, I think that I could probably go to circuit court right now and, um, file a case. I'm not going to do that at this point, but, um, that is a real concern. And then I, um, I received some information. I don't know if it's true or not, that, um, previously um, there was an effort to prevent this position from, from being filled.
And who's that from? Um, cause we would need to know facts, cause we're, let's do some facts on this one.
Yeah.
Just giving, just giving us, you know, more information, please. Thank you.
Supposedly there's something in personnel file, but I have been able to find it and unable.
And whose personnel file? And Kelda's personnel file?
Yes.
Okay, so what is this something that you're saying? Okay, so one thing that you, what, um, the one thing that we're going to say, thank you for your opinion. No one, just for the residents', uh, knowledge, no one has applied for this job, number one. That's number one. Number two, when it came to the election and I'm saying to everyone that with one mistake made, if I'm not mistaken, even if it, you know, I'm just gonna say it was one mistake. Kelda acknowledged it, right? And it was covered. It had nothing to do with her knowing of the, uh, election laws, which the election laws actually were followed. They just weren't followed to your liking. So that was the difference of that one. And so I don't think that is really fair to, um, disparage someone like that when what you're saying is not entirely true. So, um, I, I, I apologize for that, cause I know, um, most of it was not, the majority, if not ninety-nine point ninety-eight percent of it was not your fault for how that election, um, was handled. So, um, I just wanted to clear that up and make sure that that was on record. But if you have anything else, that is also factual.
And I'd also like to clear up a, a lot of the, the delays in the FOIA were because the FOIA has kept changing and the city attorney can verify that. And, you know, every time she changed the FOIA, it starts a new FOIA request. So again, that has nothing to do with the clerk. And has everything to do with, with not following the appropriate FOIA procedures, which
I'm sorry.
Attorney has.
July first.
Do I interrupt you? I never interrupt you. Can I talk, please? Which the, which the city attorney, um, has, has told us many times that the FOIA recording, the FOIA process was not followed. And that's why there were delays, not because of the clerk.
I filed a FOIA request on July first. I have received nothing except that it was showed to Pam and that's it. And it is July twenty-fifth. Nothing, nothing in writing, nothing about the credit card documentation. So I filed that in March, didn't get anything, filed it again, July first, received no response. I paid two hundred and forty-eight dollars for information on the infrastructure committee. And I still have not received that. That was initially filed March thirty-first.
So technically, again, again, it sounds like you filed the FOIA. Clerk responds, because I know she responded to something because I have a C seat on it and I know she did. Um, and then it's given to her boss, who would be the person that would have to give her the information. So again, it's not the clerk. If we have an issue, it needs to go to those three that were sitting right there, not the clerk. And we're only talking about the clerk right now.
But according to the FOIA act, we have to have a designated person who handles FOIAs and that is our city clerk.
Absolutely. And again, listen, what I'm saying is that the clerk acknowledges that they get the FOIA, which I have that email, which I can show you that one. Cause I do have, I know there are so many, but I have the email on that one that she acknowledged it. And then she has to get the information from her bosses to be able to give you the information. And so where the breakdown is, is between those three right there that did not give it. It has nothing to do with the clerk. And all I'm trying to do is, is keep us right on task, uh, for this particular position for the clerk.
Right.
And now that we have a new city administrator, I'm sure because you've decided to appoint her, will be doing oversight for the city clerk. Correct? Okay. Anything else? Okay. Roll call please.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Kness.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
No.
Motion, Karen.
Thank you. Next up is the Act fifty-one street. The motion to adopt the resolution for designation of street administrator. All right, you have a motion before you, um, to, uh, list me as the street administrator. List me being, uh, the city administrators through Montenegro as the street administrator.
Um, uh, list me being, uh, the city administrators through Montenegro as the street administrator. Um, MDOT requires that, uh, the governing body designates a single administrator. Uh, for the street administrator, uh, program. And that is the resolution that is before you tonight. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to adopt the attached resolution to designate Susan Montenegro, our city administrator, as the street administrator for the city of Lake Village.
Second.
So, uh, the motion to adopt the attached resolution to designate Susan Montenegro as the administrator. As the street administrator for the city of the Plaid Village has been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
Yes. You can go ahead. Um, I'm all for you being, um, uh, what is it? Whatever will be. I just wanted to make sure that when you are in the meetings that you push for, uh, the guardrails. And you make your contact with MDOT, push for the guardrails to be replaced on the crossovers for six ninety-six, uh, for Santa Barbara.
Yes.
Thank you. That is all I have.
It's been that way for a little while.
The date is December twentieth, twenty-one? Just to get typo.
Get the typos, you can correct that. Thank you. Any other discussion?
Who is currently though?
I am. I was.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
Yes.
Councilmember Canis?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next up is the appointment of SAKWA representative and alternate. It might sound like it's a, like we just did this and we did, we're changing it again, so. Well.
It's, uh, motion before you, uh, the resolution to appoint me as the, uh. Voting representative and Suzie Steck as the alternate, um, to have staff involved in that. Um, and, uh, to bring the reports back, uh, to counsel, uh, from the meetings that we attend. Uh, SAKWA is our. Let me see if I get this right. Don't, don't try to help me yet. Um, it is South Oakland County. Water Authority.
Yeah, I got it. Okay.
Okay, I should know what I'm talking about if I'm going to be appointed to it, right? Um, so I know that this had been done before, um, but it's just, uh, putting staff in those positions.
I'll make a motion to adopt the attached resolution to appoint, uh, Susan Montenegro as our SAKWA representative. And, uh, Suzie Stack as our SAKWA alternate.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, as the SAKWA representative for the past seven months, I'm wondering why this change is being made. Um, when I did start attending, SAKWA was totally unaware of our one point four, four million dollar water loss. That we've had since two thousand seventeen. So, um, it just seems that perhaps, uh, rather. More people involved or other candidates that do have council people as their representatives.
So it was brought up, um, to, uh. Rather, excuse me, to go back to the way that it was, where it was always a staff person. It was a city administration, administrator and a staff person. That, um, was the representatives for SAKWA and for SAKRA. And so, uh, it was asked whether or not we should put, uh, the city administrator back into that position and keep it as staff. And I agreed. And so that's why we are where we're at today. I disagree. I mean, just, that's it. So that's why we're at. What's wrong with changing it? Nothing's wrong with changing it. Change is good.
I agree. So changing it to not being staff. I mean, it was great as a council person to be able to go out and get information that we don't receive here. So that was a little.
Did we get any reports from SAKWA? SAKWA?
I mean.
I was gonna ask my question, but I just definitely remember, so.
Yeah, yes, I did give it.
So, okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
Yes.
Councilmember Canis?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
No.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next up is the appointment for SAKRA representative and alternate.
So SAKRA is, I'll have to read this one. Sorry about that. Uh, is the Southeastern Open Resource Recovery Authority. And that is for our recycling and our refuse pickup. Um, and again, it is to list, uh, me, Susan Montenegro as the city administrator. As a representative on this board and Susan Steck as the alternate for the city of Lakewood Village.
Thank you. Who would like to make the motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion to adopt the attached resolution to appoint Susan Montenegro as our SAKRA representative. And Suzie Stack as our. I, I saw it on here. I saw Barb's name on here. Give me for a second. And Suzie Stack as, uh, our, uh, SAKRA, uh, uh, SAKRA alternate.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
No.
Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Canis?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, next is, um, the resident petition to establish a special assessment district.
Okay, I handed out, uh, a memo just prior to, um. Council meeting on that, um. Petition was received from property owners on Eldorado Place between eleven mile and Meadowbrook Way requesting to enter into a cost sharing agreement. Uh, that would be equally split with the city of Lakewood Village to pave the existing dirt road. Um, there were two options, uh, and cost estimates that were submitted by Gipps Webster for this. Uh, with costs ranging from a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars to a hundred and eighty thousand, depending on which option was chosen. Um, and that cost, uh, right, uh. Then relates to, uh, each of the property owners out there to either six thousand or eighty-two hundred per home. Over a ten-year period to pay that back. Um, and this is kind of the first step in that program. And Scott, I'm going to let you address anything that I'm leaving out of this, of the special assessment district. Um, but one of the, the first step is to have the public hearing to establish, uh, the, the special assessment, assessment district. And then, um, there will be further hearings that, uh, have to deal with setting up the, the special assessment role. Um, for that district and, uh, other items that, uh, Scott established in there or listed in there. I don't know if there are any other questions or Scott, if you want to add any more to that.
I'll just give a, a real brief overview of the process for those, those that are new to it. Uh, chapter fifty-eight of our court of ordinances deals specifically with the special assessment process. And there's two ways that a special assessment in essence can be started. Uh, one is on initiative of the council and the other is upon receipt of a petition from red, from, uh, group of residents that are interested in, uh, a public improvement. Uh, that would directly benefit their property. So the city has received that, um. The next step is, is to indicated is that, uh, scheduling it for the first public hearing, which is a, a hearing on advisability. There are certain, there's certain information that council will have to have before it can confirm a role and, and actually institute, institute a special assessment. Uh, there, there's five things and one of it is the, uh, the nature and extent of the improvement. Uh, as well as any alternative, uh, methods for achieving that agreement. And a lot of this stuff has already been included in their petition and, and the information that's been submitted, but I will state it just so that, uh, everyone's clear. Um, the other one is creating a tentative district, which is the properties to be included in these special assessments. Uh, the costs that are associated, again, this information's been provided. Um, and then, uh, actual scheduling a date public hearing, it's like it's proposed for August fifteenth. And then actual sending of the notice of that. Under our ordinance, the council can require that the residents, uh, front, we okay over there? The resident, uh, the council can require the residents to fund the cost of the special assessment publication fees or they can waive that cost. So I would, um, the, the next step would then be, uh, have the first public hearing at which point in time. Uh, council will receive those cost assessments, receive input from any members of the district or otherwise that, uh, have any comments, questions, concerns. About the proposal, the cost, uh, the alternatives or, um, the district itself. And at the conclusion of that first public hearing, council will adopt or potentially could adopt a resolution. That says either yes or no and directs the treasurer to, your fly is over here now. Directs the treasurer to, uh, certify the role. And, uh, then it will be scheduled for a second public hearing to hear objections on the, the role. That public hearing would be limited to, I feel like Mike Pence right now, um, the, uh. The, uh. The second public hearing is limited, objections are limited to individuals that have been identified as part of the role. And the basis for that objection would be that they're, they're improperly included in that role. The conclusion of the second hearing of council is satisfied. At that point, they would then adopt a resolution establishing the, the district. Authorizing the project to proceed and the period of time with which the residents would pay back their share of the project. But the brief overview of the process, uh, from the perspective of why, so. All right. Thanks for sending them over, CP.
You're welcome.
I'll, I'll go ahead and make a motion here. It's, it's, it's a long motion because we're doing this, because it's, it's being done ver- via an initiatory petition versus the resolution. The motion is, is quite long, but, uh, uh, I'm going to, uh, propose that the, uh. Uh, the city council direct the city administrator to prepare or cause to be prepared. The tentative nature and extent of the proposed public improvement and any alternatives which may be considered. Um, the city council directs the city administrator to prepare or cause to be prepared. The tentative outer limits of the proposed special assessment district or alternative, alternate districts. The city administrator shall make a report to city council, which recommends what proportion of the cost should be paid by special assessment and what part, if any. Should be a general obligation to the city. The number of installments in which the assessment may be paid and the residential lots and commercial properties, which should be included in the special assessment district. The report of the city administrator shall be filed with the city clerk for presentation to city council on August fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. And such a report shall be available for public examination. On August fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, at the public hearing on advisability of proceedings, the city council shall receive cost estimates and hear from any and all interested parties. As to all matters during upon the nature and extent of the public improvement, the scope of the district and all other matters affecting advisability of proceeding. All property owners who desire to object in writing shall be afforded an opportunity to do so to, about prior to the close of the hearing. The public hearing scheduled on advisability of proceedings shall be properly noticed, stating the time. And place of the hearing and shall be published once in a newspaper circulated in the city, not less than ten days prior to the date of such hearing. The notice shall also be sent to the city clerk. Shall also be sent by the city clerk, uh, first class mail to each owner of the properties, property subject to assessment.
Have a second. Did you get all that, Kelda?
You're, you're, you're recording it, right?
I have a second.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Is there any discussion? And this is just to set the hearing date for August fifteenth during our regular council meeting.
Yeah. Just the, the one thing that you, you mentioned in, in your, um, description too. You said depending, the, 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 the cost, depending on which option is chosen, which option is chosen, that's actually a cost range.
Cost range.
Because, um, the, the, the core sampling that was done a few years ago indicates that the. Um, that the, the street would need to be done via one A reconstruction, which is the more expensive reconstruction. Um, however, the city engineer has indicated the success that they had on Meadowbrook with the, the firmness of, of the road and the proximity. They believe that some of it might actually get away with the less, less costly one B. So they feel that it'll be a range. So, so the, 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 the cost, that's really a range of, of best possible case to worst possible case.
Any further discussion?
Ask a question about that? Is that why it went from two hundred ninety-three thousand five hundred one dollars when you were comparing it with Meadowbrook?
No, because the residents, uh, who filed the, uh, initiatory petition. Um, have filed it for, um, Eldorado from, uh, eleven mile to Meadowbrook. And not eleven mile all the way to California.
So it's just for a portion?
It's for, for the one segment of, of, uh, of, of Eldorado.
Any further discussion? Pam, did you get, did you find what you were looking for?
I found a portion of it. Um, the last time we paved a, a residential road. Because we have done some other special assessments, but those have been parking lots and things like that was two thousand and four and it was across. It was between Woodward and Santa Barbara. The residents on that one paid, um, a total of fifteen thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars. They each were sub two thousand one hundred eighty-two dollars. So, um, I did not find the paperwork where it was a fifty-fifty split, but I'm assuming that that road was more than fifteen thousand. So I'm assuming it's a, but I would have to look further. You, um, if this was brought to me prior to tonight's meeting, I could have found all the information. But this is what I found, um, just knocking and it was only seven homeowners on this one.
And then just one other question. Do we, did we give them a ten-year?
Yes.
Payback?
Because that is what's in the, um, charter or the ordinance.
That's a max, maybe up to ten years.
So it'll vary depending on the resident or we have to, we have to agree on a timeframe?
It's all the special cuts to handle debate on before the house.
Right. But, but it's, but it's uniform. All, all the residents have the same.
The exact same amount.
So, so for example, we, we did a, uh, special assessment district for the Cambridge ditching project that was done this year. And they were all given ten years to repay the, uh, the cost.
And then who pays it upfront? And is it going to come out of that money you said we have for roads?
Yeah. So, so this is, this is not a general fund expenditure. This would be an expenditure out of the local road fund, the local road fund. Um, you know, we've been saving our money in the local road fund for projects like this. Um, we have about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in, in the local road fund. Um, and so, uh, it would come out of that.
And the special assessment money would go back in.
Essentially they're reimbursed.
And do some residents pay it all upfront or do they usually drag it out for the ten years?
I do. It just depends on. Cause I did have a few that paid it upfront or paid it very quickly off because they didn't want to pay.
Thank you.
Cause there is interest over the ten years.
Oh, one more. You just forgot. And it's thirty percent of the residents have to be in agreement?
That's seventy percent.
Oh, so.
Yeah.
Oh, seventy percent have to, okay.
On the petition, it's at seventy percent of the property owners have to, uh, agree with the project. At, at any point during the process, the city receives thirty percent of the, uh, property owners in the proposed district. Objections, then, then the process stops.
Yeah, my, my understanding.
Oh, I'm, and this is all of the people?
On the second page of them.
So was there anybody who didn't? So, oh, so these are all the houses and there are two that did not.
Right. So my understanding of the residence was that, um, there was one person who, who objected. And the only other person who didn't sign was because that house was a, a rental and they couldn't find the owner.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Uh, take a motion on. I'm sorry. I know, telling me a roll call to set the public hearing date for August fifteenth.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
Yes.
Councilmember Canis?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. The next one is remote meeting access for public participation. Um, I don't really have any, I don't see anything in our packet.
No, we had discussed that, um, at the study session. So I didn't know if you would have anything for directive on that. Uh, other than to come back with a, um, a plan. And I think, uh, Jim and I are going to have more information that we will bring to you at, uh, the August meeting.
So I don't think that there's anything that we can do.
No, that there, there's no action to be taken.
Moving along. Uh, a quote for the air conditioning coils and condenser repair.
Um, yes, you have a quote in your packet, uh, for twelve thousand eight hundred forty-three dollars. Um, so if you notice a, a huge difference tonight from the last time that you have been in this room, um.
We're freezing. We're freezing.
Shortly because of that. Um, and, uh, stuff went out last week and it was intolerable or intolerable in.
Yes, all of that, yes.
Yes, um, of course, Suzie, uh, is, uh, basically the only one that works up here during the week. Um, and she just could not survive up here during the week last week and ended up working from home for a couple of days because of the extreme heat. Um, and when we called, uh, Denny's in to come in and not, not Denny's, the restaurant, but Denny's Heating and Cooling, um, to come in and take a look at the air conditioning unit, uh, which has been a part of the budget process also. Uh, they discovered that the condenser coils, uh, were, uh, had holes in them, uh, so that's why it was not functioning properly. So a portion of that has been fixed, which has helped us. Um, and I kind of made the call on that to go ahead and get stuff ordered, um, to bring it to you because we had been already uh, discussing this in, uh, budget stuff and everybody was apparently well aware of how it had not been working. Uh, but this is, uh, a motion before you tonight to approve this, uh, quote for the work to be done. And they will be, um, the price includes, uh, recovering the refrigerant, uh, from both circuits, remove and replace both liquid line, uh, filter dryers and condenser fan motor, capacitor and blade, evacuate the systems and charge with refrigerant and make sure that the unit is totally operational. So, um, that is before you tonight in the amount of twelve thousand eight hundred and forty-three dollars.
Have a motion.
Motion to approve the quotes, uh, from Denny's, uh, for the air conditioning coils and condenser repair and everything else you mentioned.
It's been moved in seconds. Is there any discussion, which I have once, I know this probably burning in everyone else's mind too. Were there three, uh, quotes for this?
There were not three quotes for this, um, simply because of the nature. I know that's normally outside of, uh, things, but with the, the extreme temperatures that we having, um, it was something that had to be dealt with. So, um, we do have the authority in those types of situations to make that call. And, uh, I will put the heat on that unintended, um, uh, for that. So, um, I did make that call to go ahead and, and authorize Denny's and they have been the ones that have been working with us, uh, historically anyway on this.
When we, um, purchased the new rooftop units, Denny's was the one that, um, put them in and they have been doing all the maintenance on them since we got the new rooftops. They also have, um, the system that's on my computer that, um, I can operate the heating and cooling systems within on the computer. So, um, can't operate them any other way than on the computer.
So they, they've already, uh, worked on, um, the air conditioning lab and started here already. And then it was an emergency situation. And this is already really ordered.
No, you have not worked. So the work has been started, um, on it, um, in.
What they did is they had to, um, come in last week and I told them we had council tonight. So I asked them if they could look at the unit and see what was going on. Um, they have holes in the coil, so they tried to weld them, the holes up. They, uh, one of them, about ninety-five percent closed. It still has a slow leak in it, so it's not going to be something that's going to hold out very long. Um, they said that sometimes it could, but it might not. The other one, they could not close up at all because they are aluminum. They said they don't know why they don't make them out of copper anymore, but they made them out of aluminum and you cannot weld those together. So they did, I did ask them to put the, um, the liquid back into the machine or into the thing so that we could at least get air in up here. They did tell me that it probably is not going to last, so that's why we went with the pull from them to see if we could get them out here or get it. They told me it could take four to six weeks to get the parts because they have to make these coils for us. That's what I was told when I had them and it was an emergency that they came out for us to get this done, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? I'm just looking, the parts might arrive in the fall.
Hope the world holds, yeah.
Right. Any other, um, discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mayor Garrett?
Yeah.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
Yes.
Councilmember Canis?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, what was added to our agenda was, um, OPEB. It was OPEB, okay. Go ahead.
Would you merge?
Yep.
First, okay, merge. This is, um, the Defying Contribution Plan Adoption Agreement. Um, part of my contract was that I asked to be vested immediately for my, uh, retirement contributions um, that the city is doing on my behalf as well. Well, whatever I contribute, I, I get to keep no matter what. But I, I intend, intend to be here for a good long time, but if something happened to me, um, my family would not uh, lose the portion that the city is putting in. So one of the, the questions that was asked, um, was how much the cost was and if it was under a certain threshold, um, that it would be approved. Um, well, the good news is we found out this does not cost anything to create this group, so it's just, uh, this is just basically, uh, giving the, the, the mayor authority to sign this document and submit it back to merge.
Kind of bossy for one day, for one week.
I'll make a motion to approve the Merge Defying Contribution Plan Adoption Agreement, especially in my Negro.
Need a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Did there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
Yes.
Councilmember Canis?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller? Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next is OPEB.
Next is the OPEB. Um, this is, uh, CBIS Benefits and Insurance Services. This is to do our evaluation, uh, for OPEB for retirement. And Pam, I don't know if you want to speak a little bit more to this. Um, it was addressed a little bit in the, the study session, but, uh, just for anybody else that's here. Um, if you want to give a little more background on that.
For the people or for the residents that don't know, OPEB is the other, um, post employee benefit that is for the retirement, um, medical that, um, when you retire, which we no longer have, other than there's, um, going to be two active and those that still have that, but the rest of them are all retired now, uh, that the city will pay for the, um, medical when they retire. And every year when it comes to the audit, we have to do, uh, uh, evaluation and, um, they have to, uh, so we have to have an company do that and, um, back to show CBA's, uh, when we first had to do that, because you have to follow NASB's. And those are the accounting standards and, um, so the NASB's is having us do this evaluation. And then once we do the evaluation, they, um, the council or it goes to the, um, audit and then we have to do, um, postings into the, into our, um, financial spreadsheet for that. So, um, that's why we have to have this company do our evaluations for us.
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement, uh, with CBA's Benefits and Insurance Services for, uh, the evaluation.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
Yes.
Councilmember Canis?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. City Administrator Report.
All right, I have written some stuff down. If I can find the paper I wrote it on, that will be the next thing. Okay. Um, first of all, I would love to tell, I would love, I will tell you all, it's not that I would love to. I will tell you all, so far I have met with four of the council members, uh, here. I just have one with Jalen tomorrow that, um, I will get to meet and have dinner. I have had such an enjoyable time getting to spend time with each of you and getting to know you better. And, uh, had a wonderful dinner party at, uh, Barb's house. I had a lovely evening, uh, with Bruce and his wife and his dogs. Um, that was amazing. I had an amazing breakfast, uh, with Mayor Kelly. And, uh, I had an amazing dinner with Karen in, uh, at, at the grill up here. And I will have another amazing dinner with Jalen at the grill. So, um, I just, I really appreciate the time getting to know each of you. I really think it is so important uh, to build the relationships between the administrator and council, um, individually, because it, it really takes. Hearing him with my, my whatever isms, uh, it takes a village. It really does, you know, and this is later village after all. So, um, it, it's really important that we all work really well together. Um, I, Karen is working very hard to get me connected to more people out in the community and I just can't express how much that really means to me. I really am truly a hundred percent honest and transparent that it's very important for me to get to know people in the community. I really want to be integrated here, um, and, and it's important for that. So, thank you so much. Um, second thing is, thank you very much for allowing me to go to, uh, the Michigan Municipal Executives, uh, Conference last week, uh, the training that is, uh, provided there and the networking is so wonderful. I did do a little retail therapy, uh, while I was there, so got to support the local community. But I really enjoy that you guys really, uh, support training. And I pass that on to my staff as well. I believe training is so important because it just helps to equip us, uh, to be better at what we're doing here. Um, I want to let you know that, uh, we have posted for the deputy treasurer position, that that posting is open until August fifth. Uh, and we'll be holding, um, interviews. I do have a couple of applicants already. Uh, so I'm excited about that. We will be posting for the code enforcement position because right now we do have somebody that is stepping into that, but is not long-term, so we do need to fill that position. Um, and then, uh, my future reports, I want, I, I plan to get this going. Um, but I will have a detailed report that will have all of the projects that we have currently going in the city, things that are tied to our CIP, um, our capital improvement plan, um, and, uh, staff updates, those types of things, so that you know if we've gone to training, whatever those things are. And if you see something else that you'd like to have on that report, please let me know. Um, but I will plan to have that for you for the August, uh, meeting. Um, and then, uh, just a couple of other things. I really encourage you, if you have questions about, uh, any of the meeting materials, give me a call. Let me know if I can help you, uh, bring answers. Uh, at least it gives us, uh, the ability to have, uh, information available, rather than scrambling at the last minute trying to come up with, uh, the answers that, that you're seeking. Um, I really kind of, or I really do want to be, uh, useful in that, uh, in that respect. And then, um, I would encourage training for you as council members. I think it's important for you to continue to do that, no matter how uh, new or how experienced you are in the roles. It's very, very vital that you continue to get training in your positions that you're in, because it really helps you as a council member to understand what you're, what you're here doing and, and accomplishing. And if I can be helpful in any of that, please, please let me know because I would love to do that. Um, and then just one other thing, just to reiterate, um, it's, it's very important uh, that any conversations, um, come to me directly instead of going to our contractors. I, I really think that that's important. Uh, that's my role as, um, city administrators to be the interface there. Um, it should not be coming from any of the council members at all. Um, and, uh, again, I'm happy to answer any questions you have and to be helpful in that respect. But, uh, that is my role as the administrator. And again, thank you so much for the opportunity to be here to serve this community. Thank you, community members. I look forward to working with you. And, uh, to my amazing staff that I have that has been helping pull me out of the weeds and keep me floating in this deep end that I'm in right now. So, um, I'm just, I really enjoy, uh, the time that I've been here so far and I'll stop talking because I'll just be talking all night. I told you that during my, uh, my interview that I talk too much. So, anyway, but thank you.
Thank you.
I don't talk a lot, nothing.
Any reports from boards, commissions or committees?
Yeah, I've got, I've got two. Uh, so the planning commission, our, our, our meeting last week was, was canceled. Um, but it was rescheduled for this coming Tuesday, uh, tomorrow at seven P M, seven P M, right? Seven P M, um, and the main item on the agenda, uh, for that meeting is to review the site plan for, uh, a new Panera Bread. Um, so I invite and encourage anybody who's interested to show up for that meeting. Um, also wanted to give, uh, a very brief infrastructure, uh, update. The, um, Karen, you had asked earlier about water loss. Um, we are waiting for a proposal, uh, from O H M, uh, to help, uh, assist us with the process of uh, swapping our, our, our meter out at eleven in Southfield, which, which their analysis feels is oversized and could be, uh, what was that? I'm trying to think their exact words. Ninety-five percent probability, I think is what they said, uh, is the, the issue uh, behind our water losses, that the meter is oversized and we need to have a smaller meter. So, um, I did actually email with, with Sue earlier today, um, uh, asking what, that we kind of ping O H M to, uh, uh, get them on the ball there, because not to use another bad pun, but every day we wait is water down the drain. So, um, and then in the interim, I just wanted to, over the last couple of months, we have found a few items um, that, uh, have been contributing to our water loss. They're not smoking guns, but every bit helps. And, and I think, uh, uh, some of these things will, will actually help. We, we will be noticeable in the, in the water report, uh, once, once they work their way through it. But, um, the first is, is Michigan first. We had a, um, water meter that was installed by Michigan first. Uh, but it was never registered on our system and we found that, I think, month or two, about two, a couple of months ago. Yeah, I did.
I asked about that month ago.
But, uh, six, six, eight months ago. And, um, so we have that filled down. The, the, the meter was running and calculating the water, it just wasn't registered, so we didn't have the, uh, the, the actual numbers to, to, to bill them, so that they've been given a thirty-five thousand dollar bill. Um, so that will, will, uh, will be getting reimbursed for that. Um, the new apartment, new apartment complex over on eleven mile, same, same kind of issue. Uh, we've been having trouble getting in there because what, what we're trying to figure out is whether or not it's, it's one meter for the whole complex or, or individual meters for the, for the residents. So I know Pam is, is working with the owners to try to get in there and, and, and get that started. So it sounds like a very similar situation to, um, uh, Michigan first. And then, um, our DPW, uh, last week discovered on a unused field or, uh, not often used field in, over at the high school, uh, that there was a two-inch pipe that was, was leaking pretty badly. So that's been fixed and repaired.
Prior to meter.
Yeah, prior, yeah, prior, well, it wouldn't be getting a water loss if it was, was prior to the meter, yeah. Um, so that was prior, prior to the meter. Um, and then the only other thing, uh, that I've got going on there, and I have talked about this in prior meetings is, um, um, you know, we had for the capital improvement bond, we had budgeted money to replace the water meters and we're, you know, obviously rethinking that. Um, given that, that, you know, our, I thought back then was the, the thinking that was probably the, the smoking gun for our water loss. Um, but part of that, um, uh, money that we budgeted associated with the water meters was to also improve the water reading technology to go to a centralized system, so we can actually sit here um, and, and get all the water built. Residents will have a near real-time capability of reading their water, also we can detect leaks faster and uh, other issues, um, a- as opposed to having somebody drive around and do all the reads, uh, which, which is about fifty, uh, person days a year at least. Um, so, uh, we've been waiting for the, uh, estimate from, uh, the, the vendor. Uh, the infrastructure team has been working on that and, uh, I did ping them again, uh, this week. Uh, I'm sorry, last week and they're running way behind on doing investments because it's a, the very labor, uh, labor intensive process. Um, and they're hoping to get that to us soon.
Thank you. I have a question about who's swapping out the meter. Um, you mentioned that this issue started when our, um, meter at twelve mile in Southfield where the lines were cut. And then we switched to eleven mile in Southfield. Who was responsible for cutting that? Why was that not repaired?
So the, the, so I, so from talking to SAKLA, um, it's, it's, it's not a hundred percent clear which of the reasons that we've been told for, for the switch over. Uh, at least I haven't been able to figure out which of the reasons is, is the accurate. It's probably a little bit of both, but, but one was, um, what we were told by, uh, I think it was Bob Jakovic, was that, uh, was this SAKLA rep? Um, was that due to the, the, the water coming in at, at, at the twelve and ever, twelve and Southfield meter is much higher pressure than the water that comes in at eleven in Southfield. And it was, I guess at that, at the time, it was felt that, um, uh, that was having a lot to do with a lot of the water breaks that we. That was having a lot to do with a lot of the water breaks that we were having in that, the water main breaks that we were having in that section of the city. So I was told that, I don't know, I I never, I don't know if I was here on council at that slate, or if I was, I don't remember hearing anything, I don't know if you remember hearing anything about.
I also, because I'm council member Miller asked about the who cut the line or whatever.
Well, the line is a different issue.
When the lights were put in there by.
When, when the mast arms were put in.
Who made the decision that they wouldn't repair them?
So, so, so we, we, so we, in part, as part of our water loss investigation, we learned that about a year ago. That the. That the line had been cut. By the, I think it was M dot.
It was by.
Yeah, whoever was installing that, right, whoever was installing the mast arms, and and it's not a. You know, just a plug it back in kind of thing, because it's a bulb under the road, so it requires significant construction. So we, the infrastructure team, again. Has talked to SAKLA, SAKLA has committed to replacing the meter, they ordered the meter, or ordered a new meter and then install, reinstall the power. They ordered the meter about. I think it was like three months ago or something, and and again, I also emailed Sue as part of the transition to follow up with. SAKLA to find out what's going on with with that meter.
Can you investigate why something wasn't done when that happened? Either the last meeting or the meeting before, there was a contractor that cut the line at twelve mile and Northwestern. And that was handled immediately, the contractor was responsible for taking imperative, and they had just refinished that road. Job had to be dug up and whatever, but they were on top of it immediately, so.
I, we we can try, I mean, we were trying and our O H M was trying to find out for us, and it might have, you know, it's very possible that. What what had happened was, you know, maybe what SAKLA said was was accurate in terms of there was a decision made to. Turn it off and go to, not not cut the power, but turn the meter off and let the water come in from the lower pressure side on eleven and Southfield. And then when the line got cut, we never knew about it because we weren't even getting meter anymore.
Okay, is there, is there going to be some kind of investigation to? Responsible, and does someone pay us that?
As far as paying us back, I mean, SAKLA has committed to putting a new meter in there and restoring the power, so there's no cost to us to do that.
Right, but we lost one point more than that, because that was last year, one point four million dollars.
I think you're complaining two separate issues, I think the water loss is a separate issue, so if we determine that the. The meter at eleven and Southfield is oversized and we're, and and that's the reason why we're we're paying for more than we're actually using. Then the next step in the process will be, you know, to get a statistician in here to do a statistical analysis and determine what the overbilling amount should be. And then we'll go back to SAKLA and say, hey, you know, we want a hundred, one point four million dollars, but it actually won't be that much, because that's the one point four million dollar figure. You know. Includes not only the cost, but the the actual cost that we pay for the water, but it also includes, I mean, that's a revenue thing, because that also includes. The component for for meter, the component for capital improvement, the component for the 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 city to run the system. Yeah, so that's, that's, you know.
Plus this year.
And I think, you know, I think it was sent out to all the council, the the email that I sent out, updating the infrastructure team with everything that's going on, talked about that. The next step, assuming this is the smoking gun, is to then begin to quantify the loss and go after reimbursement.
Be finished? Okay. Unfinished new business? Man, public comment. Do you have anything that you would like to say, you can come to the computer, if you're in-house, you're on Zoom, obviously can't come to the computer from that. Here, but Zoom, raise your hand and we will let you in, I do have one. Public comment that was submitted online. Anyone from the public that wants to speak, please let us know. Losing people. Anyone? Okay. What I have is from Jason Hammond. It says, I'm writing to the city council to express my continued concern about the unprofessional and bullying methods councilwoman Miller continues to use. When engaging with city staff and her fellow council members. In the city council study session of June twenty seventh, twenty twenty-two, Ms. Miller informed interim city administrators. Lucy Stett, that she had noticed some sidewalk flags on her property had been marked for inclusion in the city sidewalk replacement program. Ms. Miller asked Miss Steck to look into why they were marked. Ms. Miller's sidewalk had not previously been included as a property regarding sidewalk flags to be replaced. Obviously, and rightfully, Ms. Miller wanted to know why her sidewalk was marked for replacement. On June twenty-eighth, Miss Steck sent an email to Ms. Miller informing Ms. Miller that she had spoken with the city's engineers. And discovered that a number of properties, including Ms. Miller's, have asphalt driveways that cover the sidewalk crossing the driveways. These properties were not identified for inclusion in the program during initial passes by Gipols Webster, Webster. But were identified during a subsequent pass of city sidewalks prior to the start of year two of the sidewalk replacement program. Miss Steck also noted that asphalt-covered sidewalks do not comply with the city's ordinance. In an email response to Miss Steck, Ms. Miller noted her home has had asphalt covering her driveway since she moved into the home thirty-two years ago. Multiple sidewalk replacement programs and driveway. Recodings had not required her to replace the sidewalk flags crossing her driveway. She asked Miss Steck for information about how to protest the decision to mark her sidewalk flags for replacement. Miss Steck responded in a professional manner via email that she could, that she could not say why the sidewalk flags had not.
Her Hammond have access to Miss Steck's email?
Excuse me, now, one thing is that this is public comment, and then just because one thing that everybody now knows, this was FOIA, the FOIA of the email. So if you, I mean, this is why I'm. Hey, I don't know, you all have to talk to Jason about it, I have no idea, it was just sent to me, so. Where, what was that? Sidewalks have not been replaced under previous sidewalk replacement programs. She supplied a link to the city ordinance requiring all cities, excuse me, all sidewalks to be concrete. She indicated Ms. Miller could contest the decision to mark her sidewalk replacement by bringing the issue up at a council meeting under public comments. I'm just reading, I'm just reading what's surprising me, Ms. Miller's email response to Miss Steck was bullying, unprofessional. And used inaccurate information as evidence of a conspiracy of favoritism in the city. She stated, this is in quotes, is this an example of the service that is so deserving of a five percent raise? Maybe I can put the sidewalk on the city credit card, it would be under five thousand dollars for sure. Or maybe I can have my whole sidewalk and walkway done like logos, remember, it's not what you know, it's. It's who you know, according to the food truck vendor that received a citation. Oh, wait, I'm a resident, we don't get anything, especially not respect. My driveway was this way long before I moved here in nineteen eighty-nine. The city has no business forcing me to tear up my driveway to replace a sidewalk, they may have never, that may have never been there. What, and end of quote, what is the purpose of including any of this in her email response to a city staff person? All Miss Steck, Steck did was to investigate Ms. Miller's question and provide her with the facts and references she requested. Mayor Garrett subsequently responded in the email thread stating belittling, this is called belittling, berating. And being downright nasty doesn't move our city forward or get anything done. If you would like to explore or discuss your situation, we can at the next council meeting, end of quote. She also asked Ms. Miller to cease harassing the city's overwork and disrespect the staff. Ms. Ms. Miller's response was to accuse Mayor Garrett of disrespect. She accused Mayor Garrett of, quote, buying people's loyalty with ridiculous raises or free food, end of quote. Without providing any evidence that Mayor Garrett has done such a thing. She also stated, quote, no one is overworked here, end of quote. Finally, Ms. Miller replied to Mayor Garrett from her personal email account stating, please do not use God to hide your evil, unquote. It is a fact that the city has been operating with three staff members during their full-time jobs and also one half, one-third, excuse me, each of the city administrator's job. The city has been operating with an interim city clerk and without a parks and rec coordinator and without a deputy treasurer. Which results in the city treasurer is working many extra hours managing the city finances. Miss Text, Miss Text emails to Ms. Miller were accurate and respectful, but clearly, Ms. Miller did not like the information provided. So she took the response as disrespectful. Certainly, Ms. Miller has a right to dislike, dislike the response, but to bring up a person's salary when accusing them of forced services, unnecessary, nasty. And unprofessional, in my opinion. If Ms. Miller really thinks Miss Steck is not doing work worthy of her salary. She can ask the city administrator to look into it as part of standard performance review processes. To suggest she should misuse city funds by using a city credit card to pay for her personal obligation for the sidewalk. Replace, replacement program is unprofessional and inappropriate, even if she was being sarcastic. The staff has been telling the council since last fall that they are overworked. To imply she has a better idea than the staff of whether or not the staff is overworked is disrespectful too and dismissive of the staff. And to imply that a fellow council member is evil, is divisive and disrespectful. Ms. Miller would do well to focus her effort on constructively and professionally working with city staff and her fellow council members. To make the improvements to the city she says she wants to make, instead of writing nasty accusatory emails to them when she doesn't get the answer she wants.
Well, I would like to respond.
I'm sorry, excuse me, excuse me, hello, we're still in public comment for just one second, okay? It's my, I guess, the fact that I read slow, but I'm sorry, so, anyway. And then there was another one that I had, but it's it's addressed, but it's. From, where is it? For the street, sorry, I didn't have it. Yeah, that's what I was trying to say. Oh, I have it, there you go, sorry. This is from Kayla. Hello, my neighbors and I were discussing this issue of portions of our driveways being converted, the concrete sidewalks. While each of us are and have been passionate about the beautification, updating of our neighborhood. We believe that we should be grandfather in as all of our driveways were asphalted. Prior to each of us moving in and existed before the current ordinance was enacted in nineteen ninety-one. Moreover, this requirement involves a significant exmus to each of us on top of other accelerating costs. Addresses a minimum length of time for asphalt driveways with no sidewalk blocks. The first one in Glenwood, it was thirty-three years, no sidewalk blocks. Next one on Glenwood, nineteen years, no sidewalk blocks. Next one on Glenwood, asphalt were at least thirty-three years, no sidewalk blocks. Next one Glenwood asphalt for at least nineteen years, no sidewalk blocks. Next one on Glenwood asphalt for at least thirty-one years, no sidewalk blocks. And then attached are some pictures taken last week, as well as a photo of one of the addresses from two thousand and three. And another on Glenwood from two thousand and fourteen. If you respond, please reply off, and myself and my neighbors are eager to hear from me on this, excuse me, this matter, sorry. And I believe that was responded to, and then that's what we brought up in council today to discuss the sidewalks. That is all that I have for. Emails that were sent to me.
Madam Mayor, if I can, could, in the future, if there's written correspondence that are lengthy like that, I wouldn't suggest just providing them to the council members. And pack it, and then reading them to the record, just to be interested.
Any note of public comments, going to mayor and council comments. For me, Sergeant Becker retiring. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm promoting people, Officer Becker.
Is, he is having a taking coffee Friday at our building, as long as the weather cooperates from eleven A M to.
Think that there is, oh, I'll get that, let Karen talk about that school thing. And I believe that that is all that I have, does any of the council people have anything?
I've got a few things. First off, I I mentioned just prior to hiring our new city administrator. At one of our meetings, the importance, it's important to the budget book, and I made the recommendation that. One of the early tasks in her her new tenure could be to create the budget book, which we did not have last year. I believe due to resource constraints, but the budget book is, I think it's it's incredibly important for us as council members to be able to do our work. Because it does provide a lot more detail than what we typically get in the budget packet that we that we just approved last year, our last meeting. I think it's also important for our residents because it gives them a tremendous amount of detail to understand our budget, our revenue, our expenses, our systems. And so forth, and and it's a great learning opportunity for the city administrator. I know a lot of what I learned about the city and and all of our systems, like the water system and the sewer system and how they operate and so forth. Was all from from going over the 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 budget book, so I think it would also be a a great way for the the city administrators to to get up to speed. And and I know when I brought this up last time, I, there was all sorts of social media comments, like, why would we wait, kill trees and put together a book? It's just called the budget book, it doesn't have to be on on paper and be electronic, so. So hopefully, that that's something that that Sue might be able to 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 work on. Because I think that will be helpful for everyone in all the city. Second, with respect to Officer Becker, I cannot make his 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 retirement send off. So I do want to congratulate him on a on a great career. He's been, and he's a deputy by community policing and working collaboratively with with the community. So I do want to wish him the best of luck, and then also. Police department also wanted to spotlight the great service provided by Teresa. I've gotten many calls, I got another one this weekend about how, you know, a lot of our seniors feel like, you know. She's their, Teresa's their adopted parent, she, you know, the one who talked to me the other day was talking about how Teresa had like. Gone the extra mile and actually is, I think, the account holder for the senior's ring telephone. Because, a ring doorbell, because the resident doesn't have, doesn't know how to deal with the technology, I I mean, I just think that's. That's awesome, and I hear this all the time, so pat that on the high. And then the other thing, just with respect to to Jason's letter, you know, I think everybody knows that I I will stick up for our city staff. And I just, you know, I I know Karen's probably going to address it, but I'd like to hear how how her response, how do you think her response? To Suzy was was appropriate, it had nothing to do with. With, you know, the professional response that that Suzie made, and it just, as I think as Mr. Hammond said. To me, it just felt like bullying and it's inappropriate.
And I forgot to add, I'm sorry, just to jump in here, that Friday, there is a memorial service for Jim Smite. Most of you all might know, know him and his family, and it is from four to six P M outside. What is this thing called? Thank you.
And Jim Smite was the principal of Southfield later, my school, for my principal when I went to high school.
Anything, anyone else? From four to six?
This Friday?
Yes.
One question.
Yes.
Susan mentioned some job postings, what are we doing for recreation, do we have any plans?
Not gotten that far, but that's on my agenda to discuss and work on. I'm I'm working internally to kind of sort out and reorganize a bit. And I will come back to council for direction on that a little bit more, just to make sure that we're all on the same page. But I know recreation is something that's important here as well, and I just want to make sure that I'm I'm hitting all the buttons and. Um, and I just want to make sure that I'm, I'm hitting all the buttons and flipping all the switches that need to be and those are probably not good.
On that one for the person who wants to be part dial or that. That was what was discussed for the budget session. Okay. I was just curious. I'm sorry. Thank you. Anything else?
Um, is there anybody at city hall? I know we, you were at that meeting with me and I heard the one gal left. Are we moving forward with any of those programs?
Uh, that is something that, um, Sue and I are going to be talking about. I mean, I have brain dumped a lot in Sue and all the different things that, um, we've talked about, the different initiatives. She knows that part ends with, I think, part, part of the reason why she's probably going to come back, Parks and Rec is because there's a. There's a lot that needs to happen with Parks and Rec. So, um, yes, we're still, we're still going to make that stuff happen.
Okay.
So, um, I'm sure Sue and I will be talking about that at some point very soon.
Thank you.
Thank you. Be prepared to get roped into that.
I can take one other question too. Are we, are we going to revisit the ethics ordinance next month?
Yes, 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 yes. I'm sorry. I, I, it's been a whirlwind. I still need to be in touch with Scott too.
Come on, you're not up to speed yet.
I know. I know.
Um, just want to remind council that we've been invited to attend a kickoff meeting. For the Southfield Public School Bond Campaign tomorrow at five o'clock at the Southfield A and T. Also would like to address Mr. Hammond's, uh, emails. I blocked Jason Hammond on Facebook because of his negative comments and his bullying of me for years. So please know there are usually three or four sides to every. Anything else?
Where exactly is it? Is it in the gym?
Just one second. I can let you know just in case there is anyone that wants to go. It is tomorrow. It's in the auditorium tomorrow. That the auditorium on South Road High School for the Arts and Technology. If anyone wants to go, I would strongly suggest, uh, the residents to go tomorrow for the five P M, uh, meeting since it's a bond. Anything else? Hearing none, I would gladly accept a motion for a German. You all have a good night.